I'm ready.
All right. Thank you all for coming to the regular meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, March 6th, starting off at 6:00 PM. First item on the agenda, number one, Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Villanueva, would you lead the way, please? All right, thank you. We'll move to item number two, roll call. Michelle, please.
Sorry, just give me one second.
Sure.
Okay. Harris Armstrong?
Here.
Manny Becerra?
Here.
Arthur Munoz is absent. Carrie Romeyer is absent. Alex Velto?
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva?
Here.
J.D. Draculich?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Moving on to item number three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Shall we have any request to speak forms? Anybody on Zoom? Voicemails for general public comment?
Let me read this into the record and then I will get to that. Members of the public may call into the meeting to provide public comment by using the Zoom link provided on the agenda specifically, https://links.rino.gov/3t8d-d-i-n. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. With that, I did not receive any correspondence, no voicemails, and no requests to speak forms for this item.
Thank you. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak in general public comment? Seeing none, we will close item three and open item number four, approval of minutes. Item 4.1, Reno City Planning Commission, regular meeting, February 7th, 6:00 PM. No issues?
Chair?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay, we have a motion.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion passes. We'll close item number four, move to item number five, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of this meeting. Looks like we had a couple items postponed or pulled. Any reason to bring those up right now?
No, that's correct. The first two items have been pulled. They will be coming on future agendas and will be re-noticed.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to item number 5.3, case number LDC24000382850 Caballo setback deviation. And will we be getting a presentation from the applicant or?
Okay, we do have the applicant on Zoom.
Great.
And we're bringing her over right now.
Thank you.
Lori, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Lori, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can't hear you. I think you might be on mute.
(beep)
Oh, try again.
Is that better?
Yes, we can hear you. Do you have your presentation ready to go?
I do, yes.
Okay, go ahead and bring it up, and then you'll be given 15 minutes to do your presentation. And just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Lori Ferris, and I'm a residential designer working on this project on behalf of the homeowner at 2850 Caballo. And we are requesting a major deviation, which would allow us a 50% reduction in the rear setback. The, um, here is a, you can see my screen? Just making sure.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, here is a vicinity map showing the property. It's zoned SF8, single-family residential, and the parcel is .15 acres. The current setbacks are 20-foot front, rear 20, and 5-foot side. We are requesting a change to the rear setback, which would allow us to build up to the 10-foot line. There would be no change to the front and no change to the side setbacks. Here are a few pictures of the existing residence, and we would be just expanding basically where this concrete pad is located. Right here is the proposed site plan. We are currently at 29.9% building coverage. With the addition plus the existing shed, we would be at 37, which is still below the 40% allowable building coverage. The exterior materials for the addition will match the existing structure, and the proposed addition would just be a single-story. And then here is a, just an overall proposed floor plan depicting where we would be expanding the existing living room. And additionally, we've received written approval from the three abutting neighbors. And again, we won't be increasing the impervious coverage as that part of the lot is already paved. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much, Lori. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, a presentation from city staff. Carter, thank you.
Lori, can you take your presentation down, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, Commissioners. Carter Williams, Associate Planner for the Record. Before you tonight is a major deviation request for the rear yard setback. The property is located... Excuse me.
Carter, you can use the keyboard.
It's not working.
The keyboard's not working?
Yeah, thank you. The property is located, excuse me, east of Caballo Drive. The nearest intersection or major intersection for context is Miraloma Drive and South McCarran Boulevard. The specific request is to reduce the required rear yard setback from 20 feet to 10 feet. Property is located with the single-family eight zoning district and has the master plan land use designation of single-family neighborhood. This application is supported by specific master plan policies that promote the reinvestment into residential properties to support the maintenance of existing housing stock. The specific improvements are shown on the screen. It's a single-story addition that would result in the rear yard setback to be 10 feet. Staff's review and analysis was primarily on the compatibility with surrounding properties. On the screen is the proposed addition in yellow. The abutting properties have existing improvements that encroach within that 20-foot rear yard setback already. There are two existing patio covers, which are allowed by right generally to encroach up to 10 feet from the rear property line in any zone. In addition, the property to the south has an existing addition that was approved in 1988 through a variance. So there's consistency in the, I mean, immediately adjacent properties in this case. From a compatibility standpoint, staff is recommending a condition that would limit the height to one story of the proposed addition, which is consistent with what they're applying for. On the screen are the recommended, are the findings for a major deviation. As the applicant's representative noted, adjacent property owners to the site provided letters of approval for this specific request. And on the screen is the recommended motion. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Carter. Appreciate it. All right, we'll now go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Velto, please.
Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Becerra, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Villanueva, no disclosures.
Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the site? All right, we will open it up to public comment. I don't see any request to speak forms here, but, Michelle, anybody on Zoom or voicemails?
I did not have anybody register for Zoom to make public comment on this item. No voicemails and no correspondence received.
Okay. Anybody in the chambers tonight wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open it up to the Commissioners for questions of staff or the applicant. If we don't have any questions, open to discussion or a motion?
I can make a motion.
Please do.
First, I just want to say, your house looks like it's going to be very nice with that new adjustment, so, and thanks for investing in your community. So a motion, let's see, what do we have here?
You got it right there if you want it.
Oh, thank you. Based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the major deviation subject to conditions listed in the staff report.
All right, we have a motion.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And seeing none opposed, motion passes 5-0. Congratulations, Lori. Good luck.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
All right, closing item number three, 5.3, moving to item 5.4, case number LDC24-00036 525 East Plum Lane Zone Change. Looks like we may have a presentation from the applicant? Or, nope?
Yes.
Okay.
All you know me, I'm no longer with the city, so I am now with the REIT group and representing the applicant today. See how this will work.
Brooke, hang on just one second.
You bet. So what we are looking at is zone change today over on Plum Street, just to let you know. Yeah, I've been probably away from the city about a month, started my own company, so you'll start to see me front and center here more often, hopefully.
All right, news to me. Congrats.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, just to look at that location and context, our site there is the red site in the middle. The two arrows on both sides, zero on the left, is South Virginia Street, a major arterial roadway. The other is Kitsky Street, another major arterial way. Between that is Plum Street, that is classified as a minor arterial roadway. As you can see, there's a mix of uses. This is a really unique area. We're seeing a lot of redevelopment happening in this area. The public street market, which is just that whole center, has been redone. We have red going on, just the large open patch of brown that you see to the bottom there. Out over by the Kitsky side, you're seeing the redevelopment of that old shopping center into the auto, auto center. We have a new school going in just above the church there that's being built now, and I think we're going to see some developments start to happen on the corner of Kitsky and Plum there, as that land looks like it's getting ready to develop. The project site itself, a, oh shoot, I forgot the acreage, but a small acreage parcel does have an existing building. There are two current existing uses in that building, looking at a spa and a tattoo shop. You have, as you can see, you have Apple parking in the back with the ADA parking. Another thing to note on that, that picture to the right is that solid wall that exists between the current PO zoning and that residential zoning. So that's reducing noise, glare, all of those other things that we'd see with these uses. So looking on the left, the zoning, as you can see, is our site there is currently PO. What we are proposing is to move that to GC. And now, if you look at this general area, we really have a mix of zonings. We have GC across the corner. We have some multifamily. We have PO, and it's really a hodgepodge. But I think as was outlined in the staff report, and Carter did a very good job of that, is outlining that history of how that's, you know, as our city's grown, that area has become more of a commercial area. And with that suburban mixed-use master plan coming on, it's really kind of ripe to start to intensify the use there and intensify along Virginia, or along Plum Lane. Looking at that master plan, as I was saying, suburban mixed-use, this is also in that master plan when that came, it was designated as an urban corridor, and those urban corridors were really looking at a more intense mix of uses along that. So that could be more intense housing. That could be more intense commercial, office, other uses like that. So with that, there's several master plan policies that come with bringing this up and looking at that redevelopment, resilient economy, well-managed growth. This is already, you know, is an infill site, and we'd looked at this could continue to develop in a more intense way. Those vibrant neighborhoods and centers, as we're seeing that residential in here that would use that, and then safe, healthy, and inclusive communities. With that, I'll end my presentation. I'm available for questions. Also, the applicants are, or the applicants are here if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. Appreciate it. Carter, how are you going to follow that?
I'll try.
Yeah, I know.
Carter Williams, Assistant Planner, or, sorry, Associate Planner for the Record. All right, so this presentation reviews staff's analysis of the zone change request for 525 East Plum Lane. The property is located north of Plum Lane. As Brooke noted, the area generally between Virginia Street and Kitsky Lane. Specific request is from professional office to general commercial for the whole property. So the master plan land use designation for the property is suburban mixed-use. According to the structure plan, it is also located along an urban corridor, and there's a number of master plan policies that support the revitalization, intensification, the greater mix of uses and opportunities for housing for urban corridors specifically. There are also protections in the existing code for these adjacencies between commercial zones and single-family residential that support both compatibility and an additional look into what those impacts are and how they can be mitigated, and I'll go into that in a minute. So again, the specific change is from PO to general commercial. This change is conforming to the suburban mixed-use master plan, and there are examples of general commercial in the nearby neighborhood. The urban corridor generally is multimodal, or is intended to be multimodal in character with a mix of residential, commercial, employment uses at a higher density than other places in the city. And the current professional office zoning designation doesn't really support that, that goal of the master plan. So the general commercial does progress that zoning scheme that would, would better support the urban corridor policy in this area. To go over the change in uses, professional office currently only allows for a fourplex to be established, and the GC zoning would allow for a greater density of multifamily uses. A greater, it would also allow a greater mix of commercial uses, but still provide opportunities for review through a conditional use permit and a minor conditional use permit for more impactful uses like MARS. In any case, any change of use or any addition to the building, or any redevelopment for that matter, that could have an impact on the adjacent neighborhood to the north would have to go through a site plan review process for, for a specific review. Certain development standards are changing. The maximum height, the number of stories and density are increasing. I would note that the height specifically is capped at 35 feet unless they are able to provide a, an additional step back from the residential zone property. So they could go up to 65 feet, but as they go higher above 35 feet, they have to bring the property more closer to Plum. The specific property in question is very narrow. It's rather small. The ability to develop and utilize these, the full capacity of the zoning district is unlikely, but it does give a lot of higher density, which is supported by the master plan. On the screen are the findings, recommend, or, so the zoning map amendment findings. Generally, staff's, staff looked at the, the master plan, and it is conforming with the master plan, and it progresses that zoning scheme for the urban corridor. So we were able to meet all the findings. And on the screen is the recommended motion.
Thank you, Carter. Appreciate it. Go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva, if you may, please.
I am familiar with the site.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Becerra, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site?
One more time with the mic on. Do it again. Green is go.
Green is go. Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Draculich, same disclosures. All right, we'll open up to public comment. Michelle, I don't see any requests to speak forms, but Zoom, voicemail?
I did not have any request to speak forms. Nobody, no one registered for Zoom, no voicemails, and no correspondence received.
Great. Anybody in the chambers wish to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to the Commissioners for questions of staff or the applicant. If you dare with the applicant. Okay, please do. Commissioner Armstrong.
This one's for staff. So in the staff report, there's just a mention that the, the proposed zoning does not trigger spot zoning, and then there's a definition of spot zoning that comes from the Supreme Court of Nevada. But I just wanted more color on spot zoning generally, like what's the implication of spot zoning? How is it defined? And, you know, why doesn't this example meet the threshold for spot zoning? Just some more detail would be helpful.
Absolutely. Carter Williams, Associate Planner. Do I have control of the slides still with the mouse?
Yes. Use the arrow keys, use the arrow keys on the keyboard and then use your mouse as a pointer.
There's a hidden slide. I had it prepared, just in case this question came up, excuse me. So, so on the screen is the definition that was included in the staff report, this, the test that was provided by the Supreme Court in Nevada. So the specific way that staff was able to meet, or to differentiate this from an example of spot zoning was because we have this clear direction with the urban corridor in, in the master plan. So spot zoning has to maintain, has to be, I'm sorry, when doing a zone change, it has to be supported by a comprehensive zoning scheme. So from staff's perspective, when we first looked at it, we, the gut reaction was to say this was spot zoning, because it was the only thing on that, that block face that is changing. But looking deeper into both the Supreme Court decision in the 60s and generally with the definition of spot zoning across the country, because this is not a unique concept, it really tied it back to the master plan. Is it something that's progressing the, the goals of the master plan, or is it just being used to get around something? And in this case, it's not. This is something that we're looking to see this kinds of intensification on this quarter. This just happens to be the first one on this block to do it.
Okay, that makes sense. So like, to make it maybe simpler, is it safe to say that as long as it's not arbitrary, and it's not just for the sake of doing it, there's like no nexus or fact pattern to support it, that's, that's how you can get around spot zoning effectively? Like, it's just, it's not an arbitrary change. You can support the rationale for it?
Correct, and I think that the support needs to come from the master plan and the, how we are implementing our zoning generally.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva, please.
A question for the applicant, or the applicant's rep. Hi, congratulations on the move. So the, so I was reading through the staff report, which you guys probably get a copy of that as well. It doesn't say, at least I, I didn't see it when I went through it, it doesn't say that this is going to be used for housing, but does that seem to be where the purpose of the change?
Well, I-
Multifamily?
I would not anticipate it to be multifamily at this time. I think as you see the acquisition of other properties or those changing or intensifying zoning, I think you'd see it continued as a commercial use at this point with the existing building and uses there. But as that, the properties around it, you know, came in for GC or looked to intensify their zoning, I think it opens up opportunities for potential multifamily or other options in the future.
Is there anything in mind right now for the site, or is this just a?
No, right now, they're just to intensify that use to allow some additional uses that come with that zoning, and then to, obviously, it sort of starts to set the framework for the zoning along Plum.
There aren't that many differences. I mean, so the multi-
The multifamily, there's some other, some other retail, commercial uses that are slightly different than that. A tattoo shop is, is allowed within the general commercial, which isn't allowed within the public, professional office.
Isn't there a tat, I think there's a tattoo shop, like?
Correct. There's a number of them kind of along that corridor.
And funeral parlor.
Just some other, but one of the big things is just that bigger intensification for the future, so it does allow some additional-
But nothing, there's no, nothing in mind right now?
There's nothing. They would be, it's the current building is what they're looking at.
I guess it wouldn't matter if we approved it. It's not like we would be able to sway that, but okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Becerra, please.
Sure, just a clarifying question for Carter, I believe. Based on the current questions and the responses received, are we anticipating more of these just from, just to bring it, that corridor up to conformance or to align with the vision of the master plan along that whole corridor?
So it currently, so the professional office is currently conforming with the suburban mixed-use master plan, so it would be property owner-driven at this point. I will say that the corridor along the south, or the south side of the corridor is urban mixed-use, and all of that there, except for that MF30 portion, is non-conforming. So we, we could see, or encourage those to come in, I mean, to bring those into conformance. We may actually do it as a city, but the, the northern portion could stay the same as it is.
Got it. Thank you. That's all. Commissioners, want to move into discussion or a motion?
Commissioner Becerra, happy to make a motion. Please do. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the zoning map, oh, am I looking at the right one? Yes. Approve the zoning map amendment regarding case number LDC24-00036 525 East Plum Lane Zone Change.
Commissioner Velto, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Please. Commissioner Villanueva.
Thank you. So I generally agree with what was said. I think that it is going in that direction. I don't live very far from there, and it's pretty obvious where that area is headed. I point that out for, just because I think otherwise it would be considered spot zoning, and so I just think it is important that we acknowledge that. Given kind of that area, that I would agree with what was, what was stated from the applicant and from the staff. So I will be approving, or I will be voting in favor of this.
Great. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes 5-0. Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to item number 5.5, which is case number LDC240003 Plum Lane Properties. Looks like we'll get a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Perfect. Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Garrett Gordon, today representing Tom Dolan and the Dolan family. They currently own four parcels along Plum. So you just heard an item that was a little further west on Plum on the, on the other side of the street. These four particular parcels are a little closer to Kitsky on the south side of Plum. You can see Little Flower School, the, the old Carrows on the corner of Kitsky and Plum, which turned to Redwood, which has now been demoed. So that area is going through some redevelopment. Our four parcels are right across the street from the new Panasonic Building, which is currently underway with redevelopment. So the zonings on, the zoning on these four parcels are currently professional office on three of them, and on the fourth is SF8. The idea here is move forward with some type of commercial development. Currently, the master plan design- Currently, the master plan designation is urban mixed use. Professional office and SF 8 is non-conforming with urban mixed use. So currently, the zoning is a non-conformance with the master plan. So looking at, looking at that, we thought, all right, well, moving forward with a commercial project, you can see it's surrounded by general commercial, let's move forward with GC, just like you heard from the prior applicant. However, we're on the other side of the street, have a different master plan than the application you just heard, and GC is actually non-conforming as well. So what does that leave us with? So on the left-hand side, you can see the master plan, urban mixed use categories on the lower left-hand side. What's conforming? What's conforming with this new, as of 2017, urban mixed use master plan? Well, you can see, first of all, SF 8 and professional office are not, which is why we're non-conforming. Mixed use urban is. So that's the application before you tonight, is the trans, go from professional office, SF 8, to mixed use urban. The other ones, just for reference, the next two are midtown specific, so it wouldn't be applicable. The next one's multifamily, which we're moving forward with a commercial project. And you can see there's commercial both on the east and professional office on the west. So we think it's compatible and staff agrees. We're not moving forward with any parks, no public facilities, no plan new development, no specific plan. So certainly it's a perfect option to go from urban mixed use master plan to mixed use urban zoning. Same three words, as compatible as you can possibly get. I would note, and it was interesting to me, is when we applied for this application, our fees for the application were actually returned to us. Why? Because the city is encouraging applications like this, to bring zoning that's currently non-conforming into compliance with the master plan, so you can have conforming zoning in master plan districts throughout Reno. Again, I covered this slide as far as compatibility with the non-conforming versus conforming. And I thought staff did a really great job in their staff report, kind of identifying some master plan goals and policies. I'd point the two of them. This is a great infill redevelopment project. You have a couple vacant lots, couple blighted structures. It's ready for some redevelopment. And again, 2.2B, it's an underutilized property. We're trying to revitalize some vacant, blighted, underutilized structures into something special. Again, I think Plum Lane is certainly going through a transformation from the airport down to Virginia Street, and the Dolan family would like to be a part of that transformation. So with that, I have to answer any questions and thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we'll get a presentation from staff. Jeff?
Hello. Jeff Foster, associate planner for the record. It has been a while since I've been before you. Good to see you all again. So I am not going to have a whole lot to say right now because not only did Mr. Gordon talk about everything that was going to be in my presentation, or a lot of it, but Carter and Brooke spoke about similar things in this case before. So there's not a lot left for me to say. I'll keep it brief. I know you've got a bigger item coming up. Maybe you can get out a little earlier tonight by keeping it brief. So just a few details, the site with those four parcels is .88 acres. Again, it is a couple of vacant properties and a couple of single-family homes. No uses or buildings are proposed at this time. Given the context of where we're at, Mr. Gordon indicated where we're at on Plum Lane, near Little Flower and Kitzke there, and the old Carrows going back in time. Good, good call there. Keys, the key issue is zoning compatibility. Just to point out what actually is around the four parcels, you have office buildings on the east, west and north across Plum, and then you have single-family homes on the backside on the south there. Again, I can basically skip through most of this. I didn't see that Mr. Gordon was going to indicate in his presentation that it, they had originally applied for general commercial, but he did cover that, so nothing else to say there. I would point out that of the options that are available under the urban mixed use zone, or sorry, master plan designation, that mixed use urban is effectively the only one that the city would probably zone this parcel for if we came through rezoning it in conformance with the master plan. It's, it's just the most logical zone, all things considered. So this would, if we were the ones going, coming through, this is probably the zone that we would have proposed as well. Again, the policies and goals from the master plan that the project is, lines up with, nothing there. As far as the allowed uses, when I've come here with zone changes before, you know, this is a table that people have liked to kind of see what is allowed under the new or the proposed zoning. Pointing out that the uses that are highlighted in green are uses that are subject to residential adjacency standards. Non-residential development adjacent to residential typically requires a site plan review. In the mixed use urban zone, that is not the case. So under the MU zone, if it were to be rezoned, non-residential development would not have to go through a site plan review process. Okay? I want to point that out. However, residential adjacency standards still apply. So even though there's not a formal SPR 30-day administrative review process, the staff in reviewing a building permit for a project cited on these parcels, or this parcel if it becomes merged into one, would still look at all of the residential adjacency standards. Okay? And all the uses that are highlighted in green are those types of uses that would incur residential adjacency. The uses in yellow here are uses that would require either a minor conditional use permit, a 30-day administrative staff review level discretionary permit, or a conditional use permit, a decision that would come before this body. So these higher level uses would require additional review beyond just the residential adjacency considerations. The development standards for the proposed MU zone, as was pointed out for the GC zone on the previous application, these are more intense than the current PO and SF 8 zone, zoning on those parcels. However, again, there are protect, protections from, in the code, dealing from the residential adjacency or tied to the residential adjacency. And then you can also see that if by some chance a proposal came in for something taller than 85 feet, it would require a full site plan review. Here are the recommended findings. Staff can make all of the recommended findings. And here's the recommended motion. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Go to the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Velto, please.
Commissioner Velto communicated with the applicant's representative and familiar with the site.
Commissioner Becerra, same disclosure, says Commissioner Velto.
Commissioner Armstrong spoke with the applicant's representative and I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site.
Commissioner, oh.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the site and spoke with the applicant's representative. All right. Open it up to public comment on this item. Michelle?
No one registered for Zoom. I did not receive correspondence, no voicemails and no requests to speak forms for this item.
Thank you. Anybody in the chambers wish to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open it up to the commissioners for questions of staff or the applicant. Commissioner Becerra, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. One for Jeff, just a clarifying question, really. Everything seems to make sense, but an interesting thing that Mr. Gordon mentioned was that his fees were returned because the city's encouraging these, I guess, proposed changes or rezonings. Why, why would the city just not initiate the, the change to bring those parcels up to conformance?
Sorry, Jeff Foster, associate planner for the record. As Carter Williams indicated during the previous presentation, there may be a time where the city comes through to, to bring, you go through a comprehensive process. It wouldn't be done on a parcel, you know, kind of parcel-by-parcel basis like that. It would be, you know, looking at all non-conforming parcels and going through an exercise to establish what the most appropriate zoning would be, and it would be done in kind of one fell swoop. I'm not sure what the appetite or when that's going to be happening. I think it's an eventuality, but I don't know exactly when that's kind of on the, on the docket.
Okay.
But it would be done at some point in all likelihood.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. That's all ahead.
Commissioner Villanueva, please.
A question first, a couple of questions for staff. Just clarifying questions.
Absolutely.
You mentioned, can you go back to the slide where you kind of highlight the standards? I started to understand, then I was kind of reading through this.
So, sorry, this one or this one?
Yes, this, the previous slide. Yeah. So you, can you kind of touch on this again so I can understand? You were saying that some, because it's near residential, right? It's adjacent to residential.
Right, on the south.
Yeah, can you just touch on that again so I can have a better understanding?
Absolutely. So, so uses that could potentially come in for development on this site, obviously you've got all the different kind of categories that are, come from our table of allowed uses. The, the main categories being residential, public, civic, institutional, commercial and industrial. So any of the ones in green would, because they're non-residential, I've, obviously residential on the far left is residential, but everything else in green is non-residential. Normally, non-residential adjacent to the SF 8, to the south, would require a site plan review process, which is again, that 30-day administrative staff level process.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Because this is, the proposed zone is mixed use urban, there's a caveat in code that says basically developments in mixed use urban do not have to go through that site plan review process because the idea of mixed use urban is trying to bring in things that are what you would see in, in a, you know, urban zone. So, so there's kind of a, there's a provision in code that, that allows any of those uses in green to not have to go through that 30-day review process. However, a lot of what we would look at in that 30-day review process are residential adjacency standards, and we would still look at the residential adjacency standards during the building permit process. Do you see what I'm saying there?
Yeah.
So we'd still effectively look at it, just at a, kind of a different timeframe.
And the applicant mentioned that, sorry, the UMU, that is, and I haven't confirmed this, I didn't double check, so I'm relying on you. It is, it does adhere to the master plan. It, you know, currently it's not in adherence, but if we were to change it to UMU, it would be in compliance.
If we were to change it to MU, MU is the zone.
Oh, MU.
MU is the master plan.
Okay, okay.
So the MU zone would be in conformance with the master plan. The current zoning designations, PO and SF 8 are not in, in conformance with the UMU.
I see, okay.
Yep.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So the, the MU zone is absolutely in conformance with the UMU, and it's likely the zone that the city would push for if we were doing a broad, comprehensive, to Commissioner Becerra's question, a comprehensive update to the non-conforming zoning districts.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Seeing maybe no other questions, happy to move into discussion or a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion, Chair.
Please do.
In the matter of case number LDC 24-00033 Plum Lane Properties, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the, that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
We have a motion.
Commissioner Velto, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Villanueva, please.
It's more commentary. I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I just do, do want to just highlight a couple things. So this is kind of a unique site because it is adjacent to houses, residential, which is just adjacent to that, and we really don't know what's going to be built here. However, we've talked about this in past meetings and in this meeting, that whole area is changing and we know this and, you know, we're not going to stop it, it's already in process. So, and I'm fine with that. I think it's, you know, for the best. So I do want to just highlight, this is not necessarily something, if it was located in a different area of the city, that I would be in favor of, given the area and the character of the community, and I think it is an appropriate change. So just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes 5-0. Congrats. Good luck. All right, we'll close item number 5.5, move to item 5.6, case number LDC 24-00031 Bella Vista Ranch Phase 2 PUD Amendment. Looks like we will get a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Andy Dierling, with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant tonight. Before you tonight is Plan Unit Development or PUD Amendment to the Bella Vista Ranch Phase 2 PUD. This PUD is about 77 acres, just over 77 acres, located next to Bella Vista Ranch, or Bella Vista PUD Phase 1, logically, and was actually originally approved back in the early 2000s. So this, this PUD has been around for, going on around 20 years and, you know, has had no development, and we'll explain kind of a little bit why. It's at the north terminus of Rio Wrangler Parkway, and then is just to the south of the east side of Talis Valley, which is moving forward as we speak with future development. Some of the project background, as I mentioned, it's been 20 years kind of that, that this has been sitting out there. When this was originally approved in the early 2000s, right before the Great Recession, you know, come 2007, a lot of this really stopped. And since then, Bella Vista 1 has built out essentially, it's a Toll Brothers community on the, on the east side of Veterans Parkway there, on the Bella Vista development, and on the west side is referred to as Cyan. Veterans Parkway has been completed since then, which is just to the north of this, north of South Meadows Parkway there on the map. Bella Vista Ranch Phase 1 included a lot of, of the improvements that are associated with Phase 2. Some of those include the Steamboat Creek restoration. So Steamboat Creek kind of used to take a, a little bit different route through Bella Vista Phase 1 there. Identified in the blue is the new alignment for that corridor. It's a, you know, a kind of a fenced-off corridor that has, you know, trails adjacent to it. It's a nice amenity for the area. Wetlands protection was also part of that, and the, the Steamboat Creek and, and wetlands protection, all were subject to an Army Corps 404 permit that was approved for both properties. So on the Bella Vista Ranch Phase 2 side, the, the green wetlands area you see there was identified, it's, it's essentially tailwater that comes out of the Damani Ranch Pond, just to the south of us. I guess I can point, can't I? No, I can't. Just to the south there, and that tailwater feeds these wetlands and ultimately goes back into Steamboat Creek. So that wetland area was identified in the 404 permit as, as a protection area, needs to be fenced to, to protect it from large mammals. There's also some flood storage basins that were constructed, one identified on the Bella Vista Ranch Phase 2 site, you can see there, and then another one kind of on the, on the lower left corner, not identified, right by the north arrow there is another flood basin that was constructed. One other major change that's happened in the last 20 years is this was adjacent to the old Sage Hill Gun Club. It's hard without pointing. Oh, there I can. So Sage Hill Gun Club was in this area. That's since closed. The, the old club burned down. It's been in remediation for a number of years now. And that is relevant because really the land use plan for this area had, on the lower left corner is, is the existing PUD. Village C is actually identified as commercial, so it was adjacent to the gun club. The idea being, you know, didn't want residential next to an active gun club. Villages A and B were residential. Fast forward in time, the gun club's gone. That commercial doesn't make a lot of sense there. It's tucked kind of in the back of, of Damani Ranch area, kind of greater Damani Ranch area, not adjacent to, you know, kind of major cross streets. It's, it's sort of mid-block on Rio Wrangler. So what we're doing is, is kind of updating this, this PUD to more modern standards, more contemporary standards, also moving some of those land uses around. So essentially, the upper right corner there is the new land plan. We're bringing in kind of more common nomenclature, so we're, we're a suburban mixed use style zoning and a mixed neighborhood style zoning. That's suburban mixed use. We're moving the commercial from what was Village C up to the corner of what is going to be South Meadows Parkway and Rio Wrangler. With that change, we're reducing the non-residential commercial square footage quite a bit by about 30, a little over 30%. Slight increase in the maximum number of residential units, and then we're modifying kind of the standards as we go through that. Just to give you a comparison, so on the left side of the table is existing PUD, on the right side is, is the proposed. Essentially, there's no changes to the wetlands. I know you received some public comment about, you know, changes to open space, reductions in open space. If you look at the table there, the public park, the flood storage area, the wetlands, all stay the same acreage. So all of that remains the same. There's no change to that. Essentially, because it was part of a, a large FEMA flood mapping, you know, in the, in the flood basins and things like that, that overall wetlands permit with the Army Corps of Engineers, we're not changing that, that, you know, pun intended, water under the bridge. And so we're essentially just focusing on those areas that are outside of that, shifting the land uses to make a lot more sense now, given the surrounding areas. So I know that there was some, you know, kind of questions about intensifications, things like that. Essentially, we're, we're leaving the intensity of this the same, so if you look, you know, on the left-hand side in the kind of peach color, the existing PUD has a maximum density allowed of 30 dwellings per acre. We still have 30 dwellings per acre, the difference being is that the acreage has changed a little bit, because, in that swap, and so that's that additional, we go from 575 units to 609 units, a nominal, nominal increase there. The major change is, with moving that commercial, the overall potential for a commercial square footage, commercial building area, goes down significantly. So from 100, a little, little over 178,000 square feet, down to just over 117,000 square feet. What that means, we did update our traffic study, it means, you know, pretty significant reduction in potential traffic that would be generated from here. Again, these are maximums, you know, by and large, it will probably come in under that, you know, we have 30 dwelling, 30 dwelling units per acre is allowed, and a .25 FAR, so essentially 25% coverage. That's on the high side for, you know, commercial and, and residential-type uses, so odds are, you know, we'll, we'll see kind of less intense development ultimately. At the same time, we updated the design standards, landscaping uses, to bring them kind of more, you know, modern to line up with the current code that's in place right now. Street standards, we made those consistent with Talis Valley and the, and the development and Damani Ranch to the south of us. We included the newly codified feral horse management standards that are in code, requiring the fencing and things like that. So, speaking of, the feral horse mitigation efforts that would be included as part of this PUD are in accordance with RMC 1804-108, so that's that section of Reno Municipal Code that was included a couple years ago for, for these areas specifically. A couple of highlights for that, that are, that are included in that code. There's a requirements to fence all of these areas prior to any construction, so we have to submit a fence plan prior to the approval of any building permit, and that has to be approved prior to any commencement of construction, whether that's grading or construction of any of, of the civil improvements, roads, water lines, sewer, things like that. We have to maintain that permanent fencing then, along the eastern boundary, to, to fence out those horses. And I would note that the existing 404 permit also requires additional fencing, so we have that sort of blue fencing that you'll see around the wetlands there. That is essentially a, an open split-rail fence that you're kind of, if you're familiar with the area, on the other side of Steamboat Creek has a split-rail fence. The purpose of that is to avoid access by "large mammals," quote-unquote. So that would be horses, people, kids on bikes, things like that, that, you know, really, those wetlands are a sensitive environment, we need to protect them, they were meant to be protected, and so we need to fence that, so that, you know, permanently it keeps those large mammals out of there. Some, you know, just information for you, you know, the City of Reno is actually going through a Virginia Range fencing project right now. It's in the design phase, and I believe it's supposed to commence construction this summer. That project has a couple of, of specific projects that are associated, you know, with this Bella Vista Ranch Phase 2. These plans that you see on the, on the, on the page or from that, that City of Reno consultant, and I highlighted kind of where BVR2 or Bella Vista, Bella Vista Ranch Phase 2 is. The one that's highlighted, that smaller, kind of clouded area, that's at the end of Rio Wrangler, and they had a proposed cattle guard there and, and gate. That is kind of rendered moot when, when this fencing would be constructed along our boundary, so that probably not gonna be required. And then, the other one is actually to the north of us, it's north of Talis Valley East, so kind of at the, it'd be at the future northern terminus of Rio Wrangler, up against some BLM land, so this is, this is generally all BLM land between Hidden Valley and, and Veterans Parkway there. And so there's some existing ranch fencing out there, and so what they're looking, what the city's looking to do is relocate the fencing up to, kind of up against Veterans Parkway, on the east side of Veterans Parkway, have it cross across the creek with some specialized flood fencing that can kind of let floodwaters go through when, when that, when that flow is going, and then tying into the fencing along the hillside. What this does is it opens up a, quite a bit of area adjacent to, you know, owned by public land, adjacent to public land, that would be an additional watering source for horses in this area. So that provides a permanent access to Steamboat Creek for the horses to, to be watering. Here's a, just a zoomed-in version of that, to show you kind of this, this long stretch, essentially from Alexander Lake Road, where it goes under Veterans Parkway, up, you know, kind of midway to, to Mariloma there, would be all open for, for the horses and constructed. You know, that area, that's essentially City of Reno right-of-way, and adjacent to BLM land, so definitely a, a public aspect of that. So just to review, kind of some highlights, we're reducing the non-residential by about 34%, increasing very nominally the, the residential units to 609, modernizing, you know, kind of, you know, bringing this PUD up to kind of modern standards with City of Reno zoning code, and adopting some of those, those things that have been adopted since then, like the feral horse management aspects into this now PUD. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and myself and Garrett Gordon are here to provide any answers to questions you may have.
Thank you, Andy. We will now get a presentation from staff. Hi, Leah.
Hello. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. Leah Picati with the City of Reno Development Services. This evening, I am following up on Andy's presentation for the Bella Vista Ranch Phase 2 PUD Amendment. Some of this may be a repeat of what you've just heard, but from staff's perspective, these are the main reasons we supported this request. This is a change. All right. So here you can see the location of the site, it is approximately 77 acres, and again, the request is to reduce that amount of non-residential from 178,000 square feet to 117,000 square feet, increase the maximum dwelling units from 575 to 609, and to modify the allowed land use standards, design standards, development standards, and street design standards. To understand where we are, I think, like Andy said, you have to understand what was previously approved. So the last approval of this PUD was in 2013, and the whole area looked very different at that time, including the shooting range being there adjacent, and also the gravel pit up by Village A. So to be clear about this, what was previously approved were three villages. Villages A and B were residential, and Village C was non-residential because of its proximity to that shooting range. Again, we didn't want residences adjacent to a shooting range. So, the 2013 approval allowed for 178,000 square feet that was gonna be installed there in Village C, and 575 dwelling units, which would be in Village A, it's approximately 19 acres. So here, the proposed amendment for 2024, thank you. What they're asking for here is to get rid of those three villages and split it into two land use designations, SMU and an MN. The SMU would be mixed-use with five acres dedicated to non-residential, and the MN would be dedicated all to residential. Now with that mixed-use SMU, potentially, everything but five acres of that could be developed residentially. Now looking at the land uses that we have, there where the gun range was, is now part of Damani Ranch, it's mixed residential, and up adjacent to SMU is part of Talis Valley and its single-family. So we're now looking at residential land uses adjacent to these uses. And, like Andy said, moving the commercial area from down south, which, like he said, would be just randomly along Rio Wrangler Parkway, and up to the corner of South Meadows Parkway there, just provides better transportation all the way around. So again, this 2024 proposal would allow for a hundred and, a maximum of 117 square feet of non-residential and 609 dwelling units. Just to be clear, this is a 34% reduction of non-residential and an increase of 5.9% for residential. Nope, I went too far. So I know there was some concern from the public about these updates to the development standards, but I just want to let everybody know that from staff's perspective, these updates were very needed. As you all know, Reno Municipal Code was updated, and our new version was implemented as of 2021. A lot of the development standards that were in the, the existing PUD handbook referenced old standards. There were old uses, there were old development standards, and there were several items that really match what RMC is now, what Reno Municipal Code is now. So a lot of what was removed doesn't give the applicant free rein, it just defaults to Reno Municipal Code. And just to be clear, the underlying base districts here are NC, Neighborhood Commercial for the SMU portion, and Multifamily 30 units per dwelling acre for the MN portion. So, not much has changed there. Height has been reduced from 45 feet to 35 feet. The front setback was changed from 20 feet to 3 feet or 20 feet. I'm pretty sure this commission has seen several instances of tentative maps lately where we're using that three-foot front setback for housing projects and things like that. Minimum lot size for the non-residential was removed, the Florida area ratio was removed, feral horse protection plan was updated for current compliance with Nevada revised statutes and Reno Municipal Code, and the landscaping, the signage, and some of the architectural design standards were removed. Like I said, they just now default to Reno Municipal Code. Why do I just keep dropping things left and right? So, here you can see the recommended findings for a planned unit development. I'll want to go through these one at a time, because I think it's important for everybody to understand that when staff looked at this, we were able to make all of these findings. So is it consistent with the objectives of the, of a PUD? Yes, it is consistent. It's a unique situation, we've got wetlands, it's out on the, out in a suburban area, and it's consistent with the original objectives of the PUD. They wanted a mixed-use development that had both residential and commercial, and to preserve those wetlands and create a 4.4-acre park. All consistent. Changes are in the public interest. As we all know, expounding, expanding housing options is important. Only adding 34 units is 34 more units than what we had before, but I do believe that that's in the public interest. It's also consistent with the use, with the surrounding uses and the direction of the development with Talis Valley and Damani Ranch. A compatible ratio of residential to non-residential. With the five acres of onsite commercial and the adjacent Talis Valley, it will provide plenty of balance. Provides appropriate open space, no change. Provides public services, no change. Compatible with surrounding neighborhood? From staff's perspective, this amendment improves the compatibility. We now will not have commercial in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Addresses a unique situation. This amendment addresses the changes over the past 10-plus years, 11 years. The area has grown, Reno has grown, uses have changed, and this amendment addresses those. Compatible with the master plan? Yes, it actually improves the compatibility with the master plan. I think overall here, staff's perspective is, is that this is an update to an existing plan that was outdated, and really, it's a development that's now gonna be based on the surrounding uses, that it wouldn't be consistent with the surrounding uses prior. I want to point out again that the wetlands are federally regulated, they're not going to be affected. They are following Nevada revised statutes and Reno Municipal Code regarding the horses. The commercial is being moved to the northern portion of the site, because that's a major intersection, and the previous area is now sounded, surrounded by residential, by residential zoning. The table of allowed uses now conforms to Reno Municipal Code, which it didn't previously. In addition to the commercial that's being offered here onsite, I do want to point out that Talis Valley is proposing 123 acres of mixed-use commercial, 500 feet from this development. So any concerns about not being able to balance that commercial, there is quite a bit of proposed commercial in this area. Also, the overall density is essentially being reduced, because the previous approval allowed for 575 homes on 19 acres, and that is exactly 30 dwelling units per acre. This is actually changing that, it allows 609 homes on 27 acres. So if they utilize all of that, and they built all 609 homes on what, on, on the portion that they're allowed to build homes on, and they maintain the five acres of commercial, that would bring it down to about 22 dwelling units per acre. Development standards were removed, they now default to RMC, plus, again, table of allowed uses now is, conforms to Reno Municipal Code, so when staff is looking at those uses, we have something to compare those use standards to. Staff sees this not as, only as appropriate, but also as an improvement. That concludes my presentation. The recommended motion is on the board, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah, appreciate it. We will now move to Commissioners for Disclosures, Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site, read emails.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site, I read and received emails, I spoke with the applicant's representative, and I spoke with Councilwoman Doer.
Commissioner Becero, same disclosures as Commissioner Harris, except I didn't speak with Councilwoman Doer.
Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site, spoke with the applicant's representatives, aye, and read and received emails.
Commissioner Dracula, same disclosures as Commissioner Velto. All right, close that up now, move on to public comment. I have two requests to speak for, and we will start here. First up, we have Tracy Wilson wishes to make a statement in neutral status.
My name is Tracy Wilson, I'm a volunteer liaison with Wild Horse Connection, who holds a range management agreement with the Nevada Department of Agriculture for the horses on the Virginia Range. I'm also the Nevada State Director for American Wild Horse Conservation, formerly Campaign, that runs the fertility control program, trying to reduce the population of the horses on the range. I want to start by saying that we are doing our part, as Reno continues to build into this area, we've reduced the population of horses from Hidden Valley to Geiger Grade all along that City of Reno interface by 25% in five years. So, we're out there doing the job, getting that population down in this area, and what we're asking from developers as they come in are some mitigation efforts to help keep the horses safe while building happens, and, you know, as these things go on. I have a couple concerns, one is, the way, on page 33, the way it's written suggests that maintenance and monitoring of the fencing is only gonna be done once permanent fencing is in, and I want to make sure that the applicant is clear, that applies to temporary fencing as well, as well as the 48-hour repair. This area is very well-known for vandalism of fencing, that's why Talis fenced theirs, and then they actually took their gates off and left their fencing open, because it was getting damaged and cut so much. The second thing, on the Corps of Engineer permit, we have looked and looked and looked for it, and have yet to be able to find it, so we're, we're still searching. The, the one thing I do want to point out here is, when we talk about mitigations, and the application says that they've been working with local groups on mitigations, there are no mitigations happening here, what's happening is meeting the, the Reno Municipal Code, and we appreciate that. The mitigation that we asked for was that a temporary water source be put somewhere where the horses could continue to water until that City of Reno mitigation that you saw up there is open later in the summer, and that probably won't happen till late in summer. In the meantime, the horses are being cut off their primary water source. I do understand that there are wetlands there, nobody has seemed to care when teenagers have sunk their parents' SUVs to the axles in it, or when the dirt bikers have torn it up, but now, it's crucial that it's fenced off immediately. When we asked for this, we were accused of making demands, and even the word extortion was used. We cannot make demands, all we can do is ask for cooperation to do the right thing. I am just gonna, you know, remind people that when this particular project came for a PUD amendment previously, it never made it out of council because of watering issues for the horses. I'm not here to oppose the project, I agree with moving the commercial to where they want to move it. I think that's all great, all we're asking for is a temporary water source, or that be left open until the permanent water opening happens. Thank you.
Thank you as well. All right, next to speak is Audrey Keller, wishing to make a statement in opposition. Audrey, feel free to come up and state your name, and your clock will start.
Thank you. Good evening, Audrey Keller, resident. I do not work with Wild Horse Connection, but I was present at the NAB2 meeting on February 20th, where we heard the presentation. I would tell you that a couple of slides have been added to this presentation, particularly when and because Councilwoman Doer really conveyed her concerns that the developer hadn't paid attention to the wild horse issue, and that it was prime watering area from Hidden Valley all the way to Geiger Grade, and that, all of a sudden, well, for tonight's effort, the slides have been added that they're taking care of the horses. My objection is, as a human, as a person that might walk through that particular area- My objection is, as a human, as a person that might walk through that particular area, the fencing to keep out humans and dogs is what was presented. The horses won't have an alternative to going home and getting water. If, as minute, what we heard on the NAB was, the minute you approve and vote yes with the staff, which I don't have any objection to the home building part, the minute they approve, you folks say yes, they're going to start putting up that fencing without time for the horse folks to prepare and get alternate watering plans. And I don't think that's right, and I don't think that's good practice, best practice for this city. So I just wanted to respectfully point that out, and nothing against staff, but yes, they may be following the law. However, not allowing mammals to get water is not, not good, and it's not acceptable. And I hope we have a higher standard than that as humans. I also would suggest that other fair cities design, build, and maintain wildlife corridors for that very purpose, for their safe transitions from across roads, for their safe transitions to foods and waters. And it is successful because the animals use those wildlife corridors. So could the developer consider making that happen? Possibly. They're frowning right now. Sorry, Andy. But I would ask you to vote no temporarily until they get a solution, bring it back to you. I did ask Councilwoman Doer. She said that council denied the project in 2018 specifically because they did not address the horse watering needs truly. They did not address them, and fencing them out is not addressing their needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Michelle, do we have anybody on Zoom or voicemails?
No one on Zoom wishes to speak. We did receive correspondence that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and has been entered into the record. No voicemails were received, and I did not receive any more request-to-speak forms.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, please. Got one more? Oh, oh. We've got a couple more request-to-speak forms. Coming up now is Kelly Hansen. Did you wish to make a statement on?
Yes.
Please, come on up. Feel free to state your name, and your clock will start. And after that will be Kelly Hyatt, I believe.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hansen. I used to volunteer with Wild Horse Connection. I am very familiar with the whole development out there. I have lived out there for almost 40 years. And with the way they're trying to design the waterways and the fencing is not like applicable for any type of wildlife. It's just not for the horses. It's for all wildlife and the safety of the public and the animals or the wildlife. It needs to be redesigned where they have all access to the water at all times. The temporary fencing does not, does need to be maintained at all times. We do have issues with people running through fences, cutting them. We still have it everywhere. And we are coming into summer, and that's when all wildlife and the feral horses need more water.
All done?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time. All right. Next up is Kelly Hyatt wishing to make a statement in opposition.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Hyatt, and I do work with the Wild Horse Connection, and I'm not necessarily in opposition to the development, although progress bothers me. This is the meadow. It's beautiful. It's been there for 20 years. The developers have had this development for 20 years. You've known about the water. You need to make sure it's mitigated. We are coming into summer. It is going to be a problem. Rio Rangar will now be open if he puts his fence the way he wants to do it. The horses, cars, everybody's just going to run right through it. We've already been working this whole summer and fall to mitigate the deaths on the roads. Our volunteers are killing themselves to make the horses stay off the roads by walking them every day and every night. We're now feeding legally, thanks to the Department of Agriculture. We need to have the fencing. I'm happy. Thank God for the fencing. The project that the city's working on is not going to be open before they close off the water. They can't close off the water. They can wait for that part of it. They can just wait for that part. The five acres, I'm watching the map, the five acres, just leave the water open for now. All the animals need to get there. The trucks are going to be going there. It's going to be a problem. We don't need any more deaths, and that will happen if they fence off the water. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Michelle, anything else over there on your end? All right.
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Anybody else in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Oh, we have one more. Feel free to come on up, state your name, but please do fill out a request-to-speak form when you're done. Hello.
Hello.
Feel free to state your name, and your clock will start.
My name is Tina Brodrick, and thank you for listening to the comments here. Some 12 years ago, an advocate by the name of Carol Abel, who has since passed away, told me that there was a provision in the master plan for wild horses and wildlife to reach the water at Steamboat Creek, just north of South Meadows Parkway. I told her that I was concerned that, that that would get buried in some document, which evidently it has. Councilwoman Doer has a plan to start fencing this summer. Her plan allows wildlife to reach water sources near Miraloma. I would ask Bella Vista Developer to please wait. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Anybody else in the chambers?
Tina, I need you to fill out a request-to-speak form, please.
Thank you for the reminder. Anybody else in the chambers wish to speak on this item? You look like you want to, sir. If you'd like to, you may.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Come on up, my friend. Yep. And feel free to state your name. You'll have three minutes, and then if you can, just like Tina here, fill out that form.
Michael Markwart's my name. I was just wondering if the, the houses that are going to be built would be permissible to put troughs, you know, watering, you know, bowls for the horses as far as, you know, if they do block off, you know, fence it off, then if, when there is houses, if the neighbors could, you know, fill out, fill out water, you know, containers to, that's pretty much what I was trying to say.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. We'll see if you can address it. If you may please, or can please, fill out a...
Give, like, alleys for, you know, if not, if not troughs.
I can't answer that, but sure. Thank you.
Of course, I have to ask.
No worries. All right. Anybody else in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and kick it to the commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff. Commissioner Armstrong, please.
Thank you. I have a couple questions. I'll start with staff. Thank you. So I heard it brought up a couple times that there is a period in time when a similar version of this project had gone before city council, and it had been denied. It sounds like the denial was based on maybe a non-conform with wildlife or a lack of supply of watering. So my questions are, how did this factor into the existing staff report if it did? If it didn't, maybe why not? It'd just be helpful to get some color on that prior hearing. And then, is there actually a legal nexus requiring access to water and/or providing temporary watering? And maybe it's not like a cut and dry legal nexus there, policy nexus there, any kind of requirement in our, our kind of governing documents that would require that?
Thank you, Commissioner Armstrong. Leah Picati for the record. To answer your first question, I did go back and review the tapes from the city council when this was denied back in 2018, and it did seem like the horses were a major point of contention. There was also some issues with mercury potentially being on the site. And if you go back and you watch those tapes, I think part of that denial had to do with the potential for mercury and not having the tests or the information at the time. In addition, I think that, while 2018 doesn't sound like a long time ago, it's actually six years ago, and we've seen quite a few changes in that area in the past six years, including the, including Talis Valley being approved, which is now adjacent. And so I, I think that some things have changed in the past six years. In terms of the horses, the applicant has simply brought the PUD into conformance with Reno Municipal Code and Nevada revised statutes. Just to be clear, we, the horse, the horse section in Reno Municipal Code sort of follows a lot of that Nevada revised statute. But also, I did want to address the temporary fencing issue because Reno Municipal Code has several issues regarding that fencing, including that there has to be a phone number posted on the fence, and it has to be fixed within 48 hours. So I don't know if that's much help, but it is some help. As for whether or not they can be watered, I think I'm going to defer to the applicants in this case.
For the record, Garrett Gordon, on behalf of the applicant. Commissioner, your, what question would you like me to answer?
So it was kind of specific to any legal nexus requiring water or providing watering.
Michelle, can I just put this overhead up? Does that work?
Yes. Hang on just a second.
Okay. For the record, Garrett Gordon. So thank you for the question, Commissioner. So let me hit on the legal side and then being a good community partner side. So on the legal side, you can see here in green the wetlands. With or without this amendment, those are federally regulated wetlands, specific in the mitigation plan to keep large mammals, large mammals out. Why? Because they can bring in invasive species on their hooves, they can stomp and tramp these federally regulated wetlands. So whether or not you approve this amendment today, horses should be staying out of the wetlands. Two, from a legal perspective, as far as watering horses, the Department of Ag, and let me note on this letter, it's from 2019, that prior denial that you heard about, first of all, was from a prior owner, was a prior applicant group. Mr. Durling and I were not involved. Our client bought this property in 2020. This memo you can see is from 2019. The prior denial was in 2017. And in 2019, when this memo was published by the Department of Ag, it was in the contest of, context of approving the Daybreak, now known as Talis Valley Development, because these same questions came up of, why don't you provide watering for the horses? You can see in this memo from the Department of Ag, number one, it's unlawful to feed feral or stray horses otherwise with a cooperative agreement. But two, you can see here, it says water rights can also pose an issue. An applicant for a water permit to water livestock must be the owner of the livestock. So it's clear from the Department of Ag that if you want to water horses, which are considered livestock per the Department of Ag, one, you have to have a permit from the water engineer. Two, you have to have a water right for that permit. And three, you have to own the livestock. So none of the above apply. So even if this body conditioned us to water horses, it would be an impossible condition to satisfy because it's illegal. And furthermore, you can see this memo from the city of Reno back in 2019 that really summarizes the Department of Ag position on water. And it says Nevada law prohibits the state engineer from issuing any permit for watering unless, A, it's legally entitled to put the livestock on the land in question, and B, the folks who are trying to water the, the livestock or the horses own, lease, or otherwise legally possess said livestock. We don't own the horses. We don't own any livestock. We have no right to go get a permit to water. So from a legal perspective, one, the horses shouldn't be in the wetlands in the first place. And secondly, we shouldn't be watering the horses on our land or on our land up the hill because we don't have a water permit in order to do so. So that's the legal perspective. The good neighbor side, the good community side. We've said time and time again to the horse groups, if they come to us with a legal right themselves to water horses, then let's have a conversation about how we can be a good neighbor. Sunny Hills has 9,000 acres of land. We could probably be a good neighbor, but we've never been given any evidence that any group has a legal right to water the horses, so it hasn't really triggered the conversation. But I'll say in the record again, we'll be a good community partner. If there's a legal right to water horses that an organization has, then let's see what we, what we can do about it.
Thank you. I appreciate that color. My actual, my next questions were specifically related to the wetland, which you just walked through. So I am good.
Okay. Commissioner Veltto, please.
I think my question is for, for staff. So I'm trying to understand what exactly we're supposed to be looking at. So my impression of the amendments to the handbook are that there are some amendments that make the handbook conform with current code because it was written before we had current code. Other than that, the only change is to make it so, the commercial area is moved and the residential area is moved on the parcel. Is that the extent of what's being proposed?
Commissioner Veltto, Leah Picati for the record? Yes, with the exception of an extra 34 homes and a reduction of 60,000 square feet in commercial. Yes.
Understood. Okay. So under the existing PUD handbook, is there anything being done outside of what you've just explained that would affect any of the horses that are, that are present in the area? Anything?
Not that I know of. I mean, the amendments to this handbook are just bringing it into conformance with plan. It's staff's opinion that the applicant has brought the PUD handbook into conformance with Reno Municipal Code, which is what we wanted them to do, and they've done that.
Okay. So when we're evaluating that, I understand we have to make the findings that are typical under statute, but are we supposed to reassess the entire project? Are we supposed to assess just what is being changed to see whether it's compatible? Would you have an opinion on that?
Let me just put it this way. If you deny the amendment, the applicants can still build what's already approved. A denial of this doesn't preclude development. It just precludes the amendments to the handbook.
Thank you. And then I have some questions about the Army Corps of Engineers restrictions. Is it best to ask you that, or should I ask the applicant those questions?
I'm not very familiar with it. I think either our engineering staff or, or the applicant.
It seems like Garrett's, anybody have some of these questions? So I'm not super familiar with the Army Corps of Engineers limitations on wetlands. Can you maybe explain that a little bit more?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you, Commissioner Veltto, for the question. So as Andy described, this area, not just our wetlands, but the entire development of this area is subject to an Army Corps 404 permit, which takes years, a lot of time, money, and consultants in order to have the federal government issue that permit. You heard from Andy that the fact that the Steamboat Creek was diverted to a brand-new orientation obviously took a lot of review and process in order to approve that. Including in that context of the 404 permit, they look at navigable waters of the United States, they look at wetlands, and figure out what areas should be preserved. The area here in green is subject to the 404 permit, and it was designated as federally regulated wetlands. So that comes with it a Bella Vista Ranch Wetland Mitigation and Monitoring Plan. And this is recorded on the property. It runs with the land. Every owner is aware, if they buy this land, it comes with wetlands, and there's some responsibilities with those wetlands. It includes mitigation measures in regards to goals and objectives, Steamboat Creek Restoration Plan, mitigation measures, design implementation, responsibilities, monitoring, performance standards, reporting, responsibilities, long-term maintenance and management. So as a property owner, they have to comply with all these provisions. Next door, there's wetlands, and there's other stormwater areas. The Cyan, excuse me, the Bella Vista Drainage District monitors those. All the homeowners pay a fee, an assessment, to the drainage district for them to maintain and monitor those areas. We anticipate that the wetlands would also be... wetlands would also be turned over to that drainage district, and the fees used by our homeowners would go into a pot in order to maintain and manage these wetlands in a public fashion. And so as current the property owner of, and the legal owner of the wetlands, we have to comply with this, but certainly talks and, and monitor and maintain, which the federal government has the right to come in and, and review and audit to make sure there is compliance. In the past, in other, in other areas around here, they've come in and said, you're out of compliance, not specifically to our wetlands, but that there is some invasive species that have come in here, you need to pull them out, et cetera. I know Centex Home in Cyan had to do some mitigation, but it's very regulated and, and Sunny Hills and the owner of Bella Vista 2, as far as the property owner, has to comply with all those requirements.
And so you want to, you asked a question about this? Thank you. So insofar as the 404 permit, what are the rules in the 404 permit that apply to like wild horses or large mammals? Is there anything that basically mandates what you do in relation to the wetlands?
Yeah, let me bear with me, Mr. Chairman, let me just pull. So chapter, for the record, Garrett Gordon, so chapter five of our monitoring plan talks about performance standards, restrictions, and conditions. And, you know, that includes not allow further encroachment, development into the mitigation or buffer area for 30 years. The permutee and owners must maintain these mitigation goals, including controlling nuisance of large mammals in the area, removal of exotic non-native pest plant species, controlled burning, consistent with compensatory mitigation goals. So again, it's wrapped in that these need to be protected. And any, you know, activity from invasive plants or mammals going in there tromping around is not in the best interest of the wetlands and not in compliance with the monitoring plan.
So what, what could the implication be if you were not in compliance with what's required under the 404 permit?
If non-compliance with 404 permit comes with, I can say for a fact, fines could be issued, but I also believe that there also could be criminal, criminal implications as well if it was intentionally, no different than say, if you're killing an endangered species, right? There's criminal penalties. I believe also if you go in there and physically and intentionally upset federally regulated wetlands, I believe there's also potential criminal penalties as well.
In terms of the actual development and building, what are the, are there, so you're going to build in this area, I imagine you can't have wild horses walking around like a job site. Like, is that something that you have to address, or you would be addressing through fencing? And how would you make sure those fences are secure?
Yes. Thank you. So for the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you for that question, Commissioner. So let me give you a little, just let me just touch on a little history. So when Talis Valley and Daybreak came forward with their huge development, right, there was no federal horse management standards in code at that point. So Mr. Durling, on behalf of his client, with staff, with planning commissioners, eventually with council, and the horse groups, negotiated conditions in the Daybreak, now Talis Valley PUD that dealt with fencing and horse mitigation. Next up was the Canyons, that was further up the hill. And again, there was a discussion between the horse groups and the developer to negotiate conditions. And pretty much what happened was they took the Daybreak conditions and put them into the Canyon's handbook with some tweaks, the project-specific tweaks. At that point, the city council, and I believe it was the mayor, said on the record, I'm not comfortable moving forward with any other Virginia range entitlements until we codify these in code. So everyone knows the rules and we're not redrafting conditions every project. So fast forward to today, in Reno Code 1804108, you now have codified feral horse management. And let me say, if this amendment doesn't pass today, we have to comply with this plan. If the amendment passes today, we have to comply with this plan. Nothing you're approving today is changing the fencing requirements. And what does it say? Well, it says for any new development, that would be Bella Vista 2, a fencing plan shall, again, contiguous horse fencing with no gaps through which horses may enter the property. That supports what we've been saying, Mr. Durling, we're going to, you know, eventually fence off Bella Vista 2. What does it also say? Preventative fencing shall be maintained by the developer during construction. You heard from Tracy a question about that we also going to maintain temporary fencing? The answer is yes, it would be temporary and permanent. But let me say, make this clear. The fencing issue is not relevant to this amendment. We have to fence and comply with this fencing today and if approved. And we're still going through the entitlement process. So as far as developing the, developing the project that you amend today is going to increase or slow down fencing is not relevant. We're mixing apples and oranges a little bit here because the reason why we're talking about fencing, I submit to you, fencing shouldn't even be really being discussed today because, Mr. Veltto, you pointed out, we're not changing anything. I'm not asking for a variance from code standards for, for fencing, we're going to comply with it. But why is fencing relevant? Well, you can see here, everything in gray was recently purchased by Lennar. Lennar is going to build those homes. They're fully entitled and mapped. To build those homes, you have to have a road going over the creek. Lennar is mobilizing this month to build, build a bridge over the creek, to extend South Meadows over the creek, to put a water line down Rio Wrangler to service Lennar's homes, eventually Bella Vista, extend Rio Wrangler from three down to basically six. All that construction activity is happening very soon. Has nothing to do with this amendment today. And what require, what are you required to do in a massive infrastructure project? You're required to fence during construction per Reno Code. So we'll be fencing, not only in compliance with Reno Code, but our insurance and Lennar's insurance, they're building this, requires you fence around the construction site. You don't want kids falling into a waterline trench, you don't want a horse falling into a waterline trench. Also OSHA, this issue came up recently with the city staff reviewed it, and OSHA requirements are you need to fence around construction sites. And finally, Mr. Durling pointed out the other day, we have wetlands and BMPs, Best Management Practices, again, a law, requires us to fence around the wetlands to make sure, you know, that there's no activity encroaching in the wetlands. So we get in trouble with the feds. So again, nothing you're doing today is impacting this big infrastructure project that's happening because of Lennar. Our amendment doesn't impact the fencing requirements or the watering requirements, we're just simply moving around some uses that actually has a lower impact. So we will continue on this infrastructure side to have conversations with the horse groups. But as far as today, it's moot. It's not relevant to what you're talking about today. We're going to comply with code, I can assure you that on the record.
Thank you.
Commissioner Basara, please.
Sure. I think maybe this one for staff and Mr. Gordon. My fellow commissioners asked a lot of the questions I wanted to ask, but, which led me to one, because I empathize with everyone so far on all sides, that the applicant's put in a weird situation where they're having to defend something that's unfortunately going to be an experience for other applicants in the future if we don't get a hold of this, and it's maybe an undue burden. So a couple of questions. What, what is the layman's kind of image or vision of, from the staff's perspective, maybe the city, on how we coexist with horses? I don't think they're going to go away. They're part of the Nevada lure or culture. And if it's not on this matter, it's going to be on another matter, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Basara. Leah Picati for the record. I think when we're looking at the larger picture, there's nothing about the feral horses in the master plan. We have stuff about horseback riding, we have stuff about horseshoes, but there's nothing that specifically addresses horses. So I, and I think that the reason that we've done that is because really, this is a matter of the state. The state is really who handles the wild horses. Reno Municipal Code, as Mr. Gordon pointed out, we added that section because that's what the mayor wanted us to do to alleviate these concerns in the future. But here we are, and all we're saying is they're complying with code. And like he said, whether it gets approved or doesn't get approved, still has to comply with code. Talis Valley comes in and has to do infrastructure, it still complies with code. So when we're talking about the bigger picture, I don't think we necessarily have it written into our master plan. But I think that we do understand that the horses are a, a unique situation, and we're trying to deal with them on a case-by-case basis. But really, Nevada revised statutes state exactly what we can and can't do, permits have to be acquired. And I think all of our developers who are coming forward are doing exactly what the Nevada revised statutes require and what Reno Municipal Code requires.
Great. Thank you, Leah. Just a follow-up. With that, I personally don't believe applicants should be penalized in this way because of this situation. But I do think that the requests from some of the folks are valid, or at least, at least just concerns. And maybe I just, my next question is more of a clarifying question, because one of the questions was that between the start of construction, there was going to be a temporary fence and then a permanent fence and so forth. At some point, will the horses not have access to water even, you know, for a week or two weeks or a month, or will there always be some form of access with the proposed changes?
I'm not, I'm not sure because I'm not looking at a timeline. I'm looking at the amendments to the handbook, but perhaps the applicant can answer that question.
Mr. Gordon? And again, my question, I'll just rephrase, and I'll preface it with that I don't want it to be an undue burden. I'm just trying to get clarification here. There was a comment made that horses would at some point not have access to water, was my understanding. Is that true?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the record, Garrett Gordon. So maybe we can pull up this slide. So in regards to what you're reviewing and approving today, doesn't impact your question one way?
Correct.
Or the other. We're just complying with the fencing plan?
Yes.
For code. On the other topic of this large infrastructure project, yes, in the context of this infrastructure project, if there are horses who are currently inappropriately or unlawfully in the wetlands, that they would need to be removed out of this area, and this area needs to be fenced for Lennar's construction project. Now, the good news is, if you, you heard from Mr. Durling, there was a presentation ironically the same night as our application at the NAV, that, and I don't think that presentation will come here, I believe it goes right to council, that there's a plan for a permanent water solution for the horses, which is further up north, the fence will be moved back, there'll be open access to the creek, hopefully starting this summer.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. And I guess I'll end my round here, if I may, Chair. Based on Leah's response to me earlier, that I do hope that we come up with a more strategic plan, so we're not having to do this every time an applicant comes before us. Because currently, what I've heard and what's before us, I'm fine with, right? But I do think we have a responsibility as people to take care of our wildlife and find a more sustainable solution and not place that on the applicants every time they come before us.
Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Thank you. Okay, so I have, I think the applicant would be best to answer this. Applicants rep or staff or?
We're just waiting for the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let's see. So I'm reading here, it says that, where is it? I just had it. Okay. Sorry. Oh, here it is. Okay, since the street is planned for in the adjacent property Talis Valley, Bella Vista master developer shall only be responsible for half-street improvements. What does that mean? And how does, is Talis on board with that? How is that going to work?
For the record, Andy Durling, yes. So the Talis Valley handbook has essentially, they have a shared property line that, that runs down the, more or less the center line of a portion of Rio Wrangler. So as Talis Valley builds, they're, they're coming in first for Village 26, which is adjacent to Bella Vista, that suburban mixed use area. I guess I can bring up a picture.
Andy, you want to do this one?
Yeah. So Village 26 is this village of Talis. So they have a half of the street that they would be constructing. So in a kind of interim case, they, they would be building a two-lane road. When the SMU, when this pink area of Bella Vista comes in, they will finish the, that, which, you know, includes some turn lanes and different things. There's, you know, sidewalk on one side and a multi-use path on the other. So, so each party kind of builds a half of the street. But functionally, when Talis builds their portion, it will be a functioning two-lane street, it just won't be the full build-out width, if you will.
And so do you all work together on that?
Yes, there are agreements back and forth between the two parties, easements, things like that.
Okay. And the, so here it says major drainage way. I have a couple of questions about the major drainage way. It says the drainage and grading for Buena Vista 2 will address, area will address the major drainage prior to development. So what, what does that mean? That a location or relocation of the drainage shall be determined through entire, so it's not really saying anything. So what is, what?
Yeah, it's, so it's, it's actually this kind of hatched area here. Just to the east of us is a detention basin. And so that detention basin collects water from more than 100 acres. And this little drainage way is the outflow from that drainage basin. And so because, this is just, it's a nuance of code. Code requires or specifies that major drainage ways are drainage ways that drain more than 100 acres. In this case, there's not actually a channel there right now. It just sort of, you know, it doesn't have a really defined channel. So as we do the grading and define a channel, it will be a major drainage way. So at the time, when we come in with development for this mixed neighborhood, we would be addressing and identifying where exactly that, that major drainage ways is.
So it may not be there.
It'll be generally in that location. Just hydrologically, it kind of has to be, or hydraulically, it has to be. And again, major drainage way, quote unquote, it's, you know, maybe a 30-foot wide, you know, ditch. It's not a, it's kind of a nuance of code because it's draining more than 100 acres.
And the applicant doesn't own the area in gray just to, I guess, the right, yes.
Correct.
So how does that work? If they, you guys just have to repair the drainage way? And who, who pays for that? Is it the community, or is it the HOA that ultimately pays for it? Is it the developer that pays for it?
So whoever develops would have to construct that major drainage way as the outflow, outflow. So right now, it just sort of, Nevada state law requires that you, if you're collecting drainage, you have to disperse it to the property downstream of you in like, like quantity and like style, essentially, I'm paraphrasing. So essentially, right now, it just sort of, you know, overtops and sheet flows onto the Bella Vista property. That isn't conducive to the development, right? So we are going to channelize it and, and make it safer essentially to focus it in that area at that time.
And it dips into the wetlands?
It will have, it will essentially have a culvert under the street and then will, yes, diffuse into the wetlands. That's its, that's its natural drainage course. So essentially, we've got drainage coming down off of the hillsides. Ultimately, it makes its way to Steamboat Creek, right? That's, that's just sort of the general hydrology of the area.
And it says there flood, so there's a flood.
It's in a shaded X.
Darker green or blue, I'm trying to.
Oh, the flood storage basin?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So you guys, so what stores, or is that just because it is in a flood zone?
It, so this, this flood basin, and then there's another one right here, we didn't label it. So this was built, those two were built as part of the steamboat ditch, or, sorry, Steamboat Creek realignment. So if you were to look at these, you know, like this one in particular, you can kind of see it a little better because it's bigger and not colored, but there's a weir structure there. So as the creek gets high enough, it dumps water into those storage basins to, you know, during big events. So that, this storage basin does the same. It's already constructed.
But where, oh, yeah, where does the water come? I mean, it's because it's in a flood zone? It's basically flood mitigation, right?
As part of Steamboat Creek. So it's already been constructed.
Okay.
Yeah. There's no additional flood storage or flood mitigation that would have to be constructed by Bella Vista Ranch 2. It's all been constructed with Phase 1.
So is there any concern that that, because now we're moving the homes where the commercial was going to be, so is there a concern? And maybe staff could answer this. Is there a concern that that could overfill and cause flooding?
The houses would be upstream. They'd be, sit above it.
Oh, okay, so they're going to be-
Yeah, so this, yeah, this is higher than this flood basin and then ultimately-
That will, that makes sense.
-the creek corridor is lower than that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All that water's running downhill into the creek.
Sorry, can I add a couple more? Okay, so I understand this was an approved site, and we're just making some changes to the PUD. The, so here it says developers will need to dedicate sufficient water rights. Are you guys getting your water rights from TMAW, and if not, where?
Yes, they can come from, from TMAW or a private source, but essentially, that has to be proven out at the time of building permit. So when we submit our water projects to TMAW for those, you know, if it's multifamily, if it's single-family, commercial, it doesn't matter. When you are applying for that water permit to TMAW, you have to provide either proof of that you have the water rights or you purchased the water rights from TMAW. So they have a bank of water rights that's available.
So it's possible you guys may purchase from TMAW, but there's, we don't know yet.
It's typical that people purchase from TMAW. I mean, they, they have probably the largest bank of water rights in the region, but there are some kind of, you know, odds and ends out there, if you will, of water rights.
But that's what I was wondering.
For all intents and purposes, yes, it's purchased from TMAW.
Because that's, I suspected it would be purchased from TMAW. But does TMAW, does it, as far as you know, no applications have been submitted for-
No, because you have to have the actual project to know what the water demand is and things like that.
If it, you probably, I mean, this may be unlikely, but where else would the water come from? You don't have to purchase it from someone else. And would it be surface water? Would it be contaminated water, mercury, you know? Because that, there is risk of mercury, like, so-
Yeah, so, I mean, as Leah mentioned, you know, one of the reasons this was denied before is because there is a threat of mercury contamination in soils that are either flooded by or were irrigated by Steamboat Creek. So Steamboat Creek is a known source, point source of mercury contamination. It's coming out of Washoe Lake. It's from all the mining activity historically in Nevada. And so it's known to happen in areas where, where that Steamboat Creek-specific water pools. And so on this property, it wasn't irrigated with that water, and it was, you know, it's upland from the creek, so there wasn't flooding or a significant flooding that would create that. And so we did the testing, we had the environmental group go out and test it, and it's not, there's, there's just, there's not mercury above the regulating levels.
Well, I guess my concern would be if you were to purchase water, as unlikely as that would probably be, would it be-
Yeah, no. So TMAW is providing water that's, you know, they, they control the quality of the water. So it's sort of, apples and oranges, what you're asking. So a water right is different from a water provision.
Well, I know what TMAW, well, TMAW, if you're purchasing from TMAW, you're going to get your water from TMAW. But I'm saying, in the unlikely scenario-
So, no, we're getting our water from TMAW.
You are. Okay, now you're saying that you are. Okay.
Well, no, no. So if you buy water rights on the free market, you dedicate those rights to TMAW, but they are providing you with the actual water. It's not a-
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. You're basically getting credit.
Let me jump in here. TMAW, regardless, is the water purveyor. TMAW will, will be the water provider for this project. As Andy mentioned, even if they buy water rights in the private market, they would be dedicated to TMAW. TMAW serves the project. So there won't be any water provider other than TMAW.
So we don't have to worry about them using groundwater or anything? Because they're just basically purchasing it and then it's being credited in TMAW's-
It put into their system, correct.
However, TMAW provides the water, they're providing-
Got it. Okay, thank you. So that clears up that, and then, let's see. I had it. So if someone else would like to go, because I have a couple of different notes here. Does anyone else have questions? I can-
Doesn't look like it so far, so feel free.
Chair, I can buy her.
Okay.
I can buy you some fair time.
Sure.
Commissioner Becerra, please.
Leah, maybe one for you. Kind of more of a general question, give the applicant time to breathe as well. It was more general in reviewing public feedback, that there was some confusion, some difficulty in just understanding what the latest map was, what the latest documents were. Is, one, staff aware of the difficulty with getting clear communication out to, to citizens or residents? And two, you know, is there a plan or response in place to try to lessen that burden and make it easier for folks to consume the most up-to-date information for these kinds of requests?
Thank you, Commissioner Becerra. Leah Piccotti for the record. I understand that there was some confusion regarding this application, and I think that there was misinformation because people didn't know where to find the correct information. So typically, when we receive an application, we send it out on what's called a development review memo the first week that we get it. And that goes out to all of the agencies and departments and, you know, wards and anybody who, who might have an interest in it. Then sometime around the following week, we send out courtesy notices to all property owners within 750 feet, unless it's less than 35 properties. In that case, we continue to expand that range until we hit 35. So the minimum is every property owner within 750 feet gets that courtesy notice in the first week. In this particular case, Councilwoman Dorr asked that it be presented at her neighborhood advisory board, even though it's actually in Ward 3. So the applicant went to two neighborhood advisory boards, both 2 and 3, and presented the application. Then courtesy, then hearing notices were sent out to that same list of people who received the original one. It's posted on our website. I understand there was misinformation, but I'm not, it doesn't happen all the time. And if there's any plan to improve that, it would be Mr. Rayly that could answer that question.
One other thing to note, too, that the site is posted.
Yes.
I'm sure you've seen the big giant yellow signs. So that, that happens, too. We have a process in place that's a standard process for all projects that come into the city. So nobody's held to a different standard. In this case, as Ms. Piccotti noted, this went to two separate NABs, which, under code, would only require normally to go to Ward 3, but as a courtesy, they, they did go to Ward 2. There's no plans to change that process that I'm aware of, but it is a process that applies uniformly across the entire city.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva.
Thank you. So I actually went through that, and a lot of it touched on the same stuff, and all of my questions have been answered. So thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Would we like to move into discussion? Commissioner Veltto, you're green over there.
Yeah, keep it on green. So I, I don't, I see this as an amendment that's trying to make some conformance with slight change to make the project make more sense. It seems like the way that it is laid out currently, especially the development that's happening around the area, having commercial in the back portion of the lot doesn't make as much sense if we're actually trying to create common sense commercial in that area. So I like what they're doing. I think it's consistent with the master plan and consistent with the goals in that area. I guess I, I am sympathetic to the concerns about the wild horses, but I don't know what the applicant is supposed to do. It sounds like there's two reasons why they have to comply by putting up fencing. First is if you look at that map, I don't know how they can build without fencing everything and fencing the wetlands anyway. Because if you, where a development is and with what's all development around there, you have to set up fences in order to be able to develop. Seems like that's already going to occur. So even aside from this issue with the wetlands, I still think that they probably have to fence it anyway so that they can build, and they can already do that. Likewise, if there has been OSHA, if they have issues with the wetlands, and from what I've seen online and read about, it seems like that's valid, and everything they're saying seems to make sense, that they have to put up fencing along the wetlands because they can't have large mammals there. So I, you know, I'm in support of this project. I think it makes the area better and it makes the project better. And I think we should really look at just what's being changed, not try to rewrite the whole handbook or make a new issue out of something that there are already a lot to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Veltto. Commissioner Draculich, I'm in agreement there. I won't take that much further, but I'm in agreement. Any other discussion? Commissioner Villanueva?
Yeah, I just want to add, there's really not a whole lot we can do. It's not a lot of changes, so.
Commissioner Becerra.
Sure. Similar place as my fellow commissioners here, too, but I'll kind of reiterate what I mentioned earlier. I don't think this is the last time we're going to see this and hear about it, and it's not fair to both the applicant or for advocates and the residents to have this kind of psychological weight of like, what do I do? I'm trying to do what is required of me. So I do want to ask for us to think about how we can make a formal request with our fellow city council folks and other stakeholders to work with state agencies to make sure that there's a strategic plan in place, so everyone can just follow that, and, and we can coexist with horses and other wildlife and so forth. And no one has to be burdened with these situations. Because I do think, from what I've heard and what, and who I've spoken with, people do want to be good stewards and work with folks to find solutions. But in this particular case, based on the findings, I'm in support.
Great, looks like we've had a good discussion. If not, go ahead and move to a motion.
Happy to, happy to make a motion.
Please do.
All right. Bear with me. Or is it up on the screen? Oh, there we go. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the PUD amendment subject to the condition list in the staff report in the case number of LDC 24-00031, Bella Vista Ranch, Phase 2, PUD amendment.
All right, we have a motion.
Commissioner Veltto, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing now, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Good luck with your project. Thank you all for coming in. All right, we'll close item 5.6 and move to item 6, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Commissioner Becerra, believe you pulled in the last one?
I did, actually.
Can we, can we pause for just a second, please, until-
Sure.
-the room clears out?
Sorry to throw that on you.
I think we're quiet enough now. Go ahead.
I'm just having a hard time hearing, so, yeah, that's why I asked if we could wait.
Take your conversations outside, please.
Commissioner Becerra, go ahead.
All right, take two. Yeah, quick update. Nothing out of the ordinary. It was a pretty quick meeting at the last Regional Planning Commission. One of the things that did come before us was a matter that went through this body back in November, I believe, and that passed unanimously. It was in regards to the project south of I-80. Yes, south of I-80, and there were no major concerns or questions. Yeah, nothing particularly out of the ordinary to report on that.
All right, thank you. Close item 6. Item number 7, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Mike Rayly, planning manager, I do have a few announcements tonight. Under item 7.1, report on status of planning division projects. As I think you're all aware, our planning team is working on some cleanup items to the municipal code and some minor amendments. You will have a presentation kind of on the first round of those at your, at your, either your next meeting or your first meeting in April. We're putting that together, so look for that coming up. Item 7.2, announcement of upcoming training opportunities. I know we have some, a couple of new commissioners, so we will be having a training, a planning commissioner training. We'll have a series, but the first one will be at your first meeting in April. And in the meantime, if, if you're so inclined, if you go to the regional planning's website, so tmrpa.org, they have a training page, and I would encourage you to look at some of the trains that they have. You can do them at your own pace. They're all related, obviously, to Nevada. They, there are some on wildland urban interface, there are some on basic Nevada planning law, there's some on generalized NRS statutes. I'd encourage you, if you're so inclined, to do that, but we will be having a formal series of trainings coming up here in the next, over the next several months. 7.3, just to give you kind of some updates. Commissioner Becerra had requested kind of a summary of what the planning commission reviewed in 2023, and I think you probably all received the memo, but just to give you kind of a quick summary, in 2023, the planning commission reviewed 74 cases total. That was down slightly from 87 in 2022, essentially a 15% reduction. As I think you'll see, if you look at the graphs, conditional use permits are by far the majority of cases that come. But of course, we do have tentative maps, you know, even we have one variance, for example, major deviation. So there, there was a variety, but conditional use permits were the bulk of the cases reviewed. Interestingly enough, so far in 2024, we have not had a single tentative map brought to the planning commission. I think that's probably easy to see why, given current interest rates and kind of slow in the housing market. However, I will tell you, based on our pre-application meetings that we hold with developers every Monday, we are seeing some residential projects starting to trickle back in. So I think you'll see some upcoming residential projects in the near future. If you have any specific questions on that or want kind of a more in-depth analysis or presentation, we're happy to put that together. But based on what Commissioner Becerra had requested, that's, that's what we provided. So just let me know. Finally, actions taken by the city council on previous projects. The Mill Street master plan amendment and zone change, which was adjacent to the Grand Sierra that the planning commission voted to deny, that will go to city council next Wednesday, March 13th, to be heard at their regular meeting. And then one other update, the Reno Ax project, which the commission approved at their last meeting, has been appealed to city council by one of the residents of the Paladio, and that will be heard on March 27th by the planning commission at 6 o'clock PM. And that's all the updates I have for tonight.
Did you say by the planning commission?
Oh, excuse me, by the city council.
Oh, okay, okay. Am I going to see it again?
The planning commission decision was, was appealed to the city council.
When's our next planning commission meeting?
March 20th.
Okay, great.
Well, can, may we have the drafts of any changes for the, you said there were going to be changes to the RMC, to the Reno Municipal Code? Is that what you-
Yes, that'll come forward in the staff report.
Can we get it in advance? Are there going to be drafts?
There are still changes being made as we speak, so I could ask that-
Because we get the staff report like three days before, or a week, or something like that. It's really not a lot of time when you have a full-time job.
Angela Foose is heading that, that, that effort along with Grace McAden and Lauren Knox, so let me check with them, and I'll see, make sure that we can get it out as far in advance as possible.
Okay, or at least some kind of, I don't know, maybe we can do like a Zoom session or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have something on this item? Go ahead.
Oh, just a follow-up question for Mike, if I may. First, thank you so much for you and staff for providing that summary, kind of an impact report. I guess my question is, we're still kind of early on, we're in Q3 or almost start of Q2 this year, and we recently recommended with Ms. Foose that a lot of things maybe should transition to more administrative decisions. And so with that, and if that moves forward and approved and all that, what would the remainder of the year tentatively look like for us in such a scenario?
You know, it's, it's hard to say, just based, there's a lot of factors that play into that. For example, the economy right now plays a lot into housing. But generally speaking, I think if I was to provide you with numbers that the planning that the planning commission reviewed prior to the adoption of the current code, the update that went through in 2021, I think you would see that the cases would be higher. A lot of the processes that required what was known previously as a special use permit, which is now a conditional use permit, now are administrative reviews, such as a site plan review or minor conditional use permit. So I think generally speaking, the number of cases brought forward to the planning commission has gone down. However, what I think you would see is less multifamily, for example, because at your last meeting, there was discussion of eliminating the conditional use permit requirement, for example, for multifamily projects over 100 units. So you would see those come forward. Tentative maps by state law, anytime you create more than four parcels, has to go through the tentative map process. So I don't see any reduction in the number of tentative maps that you will see moving forward for residential projects. So you probably will see a little dip in terms of multifamily use, but for large-scale PUDs and tentative maps, I think it will essentially be the same. Thank you.
All right, close item 7. Item 8, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items for possible action. Seeing none, we'll close item 8. Did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, maybe tie it back to something that Mike recommended earlier too. He said something about training and all of us kind of taking the initiative to go to the website. And perhaps, is there other training that you might recommend as a body here or during a meeting or...
So obviously, I recommend the TMRPA trainings just because they're relevant to our region and they're free. There are the trainings through American Planning Association, Urban Land Institute. There's a variety of those. And that's what we're looking at when we come back with our trainings, is stuff that you can't easily access on your own. I think that's a great place to start. But if you go to American Planning Association, APA, or ULI, Urban Land Institute, they do have trainings, but as I mentioned, there's a fee to access those.
Great, thank you.
Great.